Okay. All right, just nod your head, either yes or no. Okay, everybody's hearing? Are we ready in the booth?
Ready to go?
Okay. He doesn't know to give you the thumbs up.
Yeah, we got to know the thumb thing, guy. Okay, all right, we're good. All right, we're called to order. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to all of you who were able to make it today on a short notice. This is a special meeting that we've called because we've got somewhat of a special situation that we need the council to be involved and to make some decisions on. So with that, I'll ask everyone to stand and listen to the President of Allegiance.
Welcome to the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to make sure we're clear on the record, it is Thursday, March 12th, 2:00 PM, and this is a special council meeting called for the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Diane, please let the record show that all members of council present with Councilwoman Selena Semios present via the conference call. Okay? So with that, I'll get right into it. The item for discussion and decision today has to deal with the potential postponement, right? Which means it would be rescheduled. The seafood festival, which is supposed to take place this Saturday and Sunday, March 14th and 15th. Just to perhaps give some background context, I'm going to ask both the village manager and Keith to share some thoughts with us. So who wants to go first?
Well.
And before, just before, we've been, we've been talking about this issue in meetings since Monday. But it's clearly, this situation is changing very rapidly, and a lot of things have happened over the last 24 or 36 hours. That makes it even more acute that we, we come together and make some determinations with the safety of our citizens in mind. With that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. So on February 20th, the village council unanimously approved a special event permit for this event. Since it was a council action that approved it legally, we need a council action to make any changes to that approval, which necessitated this meeting. As everyone's aware, we have the coronavirus issue that is, as you just clearly explained, is upon us and is evolving at an incredibly rapid rate. There have been, at this point, a statewide declaration of emergency by the governor. There have been statements at the state level in terms of recommendations for municipalities to take certain precautionary actions that relate to larger scale events. There was a obvious concern raised that you have this seafood festival coming up this weekend. And, you know, do we need to do something about it? So this meeting has been convened to allow the council to take whatever action it feels is appropriate to consider or reconsider that special event approval as you see fit.
So to follow with that, why would we consider postponing this? This virus has spread very quickly through other countries. It hasn't hit that part of the plateau, that part of the ramp up here in Florida yet or in the United States yet, but it is anticipated. The transmission is most, is from, is respiratory droplets and contact between people within six feet of each other. So what the CDC and the HHS has suggested is that large events that do have people within six feet of each other and attract people from large areas be postponed. The, the virus itself is like many of the other coronaviruses that have been here and will be here for a while, three, up there, they say up to three years. A vaccination won't be available for upwards of 18 months, some people, 12 to 18 months is what was said. Some people say 18 months is a quick time. The, what the HHS and the CDC are trying to do is to, is to let it start, go slowly through the population and not everybody getting it at one time. Once, like Italy where they got it, they went from, from, I believe, 600 at the end of February to over 10,000, you know, within this month. It inundated their, their systems. So the suggestion from the, from the authorities to, to hold off large events is in the, in the, in the guise to try to main, try to slow down the spread throughout the population. We know there's going to be contact among people throughout society and in their everyday life. They're really meaning, talking about large events right now. And that's why we have this on here to consider. The, if we were to have the event, obviously, everybody, people would have to take their own precautions. They would have to measure their own health condition and their, their susceptibility to, to the flu, flu or viruses like this and, and take their own necessary precautions. There, we do have a vendor that hosts this event for us. They, they have spent money in promoting this event. We hire the musicians. We do have a contract with them to perform and we will deal with them separate from the, from the vendor. The vendor is starting to set up this after, this afternoon and that's, and the sooner we obviously deal with this, the better. And that's why we called the special meeting in such short notice.
Okay. I'll just like to just share with you, when we decided, the right thing to do was to get, get the council together to address this question. Shortly thereafter, after we had actually sent out the notice that we were having a special meeting, Governor DeSantis had a press conference, which we were expecting. And pretty much we were expecting he was going to be getting, giving out a very, more additional specific guidance about things that we should be doing throughout the state. I want to read a quote from him. He quoted specifically and said that, "I am recommending local municipalities and private entities to strongly consider limiting or postponing mass gatherings in the state of Florida." Then he went on to say about, you know, the health officials believe where some of these large scale events can be postponed and done later is the prudent path to take. So that, that just kinds of, I think reinforces the notion that it's unfortunate. And, and I just want to make a clear distinction, we're talking about postponing. Lou Recio will be looking at possible other dates, timeframes. I think it might be later in the fall, but in terms of when this event could be rescheduled. That coupled with the cascading effect that we've seen across the sports world, across the private charitable entities that have events going on across the country, have canceled significantly all of these events in a very rapid manner. So with that, I'll open up for any comments, questions, discussion from council. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did we also receive any guidance from, or probably guidance, not direction, from the county? From our, the Health Department or any other department with regard to large events like this?
I don't have anything directly from them. The, I did have a conversation with somebody who was at a county meeting the other day where the county was kind of warning not for everybody to go crazy. But then I did just hear within the last half hour that they are looking at postponing their mayor's ball.
That has been postponed.
I had heard that too. But it has been?
Announcement went out early, about a half an hour before the meeting.
So there's one other, one other large event that I know of coming up this weekend. That is the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. Do, do we know anything about that?
I, I did hear that they, and Rob Hill can confirm this because I believe they talked to him, that they did cancel the Relay for Life, not only here, but nationwide. Postponed it nationwide.
Okay. All right, those are pretty two powerful indicators of inappropriate action, I would say.
Regarding the mayor's ball, was it canceled or postponed?
The announcement that I received, and it was at about 1:00, indicated it was, their intent was to try and reschedule it for September. But no date had been set.
We're going to win it with date clashes since September. Okay, all right.
I guess I would, you know, just like to talk out loud about pros and cons, right?
Sure.
The, you know, postponing is not canceling, which you effectively said, so I think that that's good. Even if we were to hold it, I think the downside of that is most people won't attend. So there's.
At this point, with people looking at what's going on and seeing all these cancellations, the human condition is going to say,
Right.
"I'm staying home," kind of, but you're right. So even if you had the event, how successful is it going to be?
Exactly.
That is a valid.
Especially when we have lots of families here who have multi-generational ages living in their home and they're not going to compromise young children or elderly.
Yeah, valid point. Okay, thanks.
Richard?
Yeah, since I see him lurking over there, I'm going to put Lou on the spot, if I could. If you could remember, what, what type of numbers are we talking about that we've gotten the past couple of years at the seafood festival?
Over the period of, of the two days, upwards of 10,000 people.
Okay, so it's a decent size event. I would say it's somewhat comparable because I know over in the Village of Wellington, they still have, you know, events going that are gangbusters on the horse front. I mean, it's a different thing because I'm sure the village doesn't control those because they're run by private entities. But I'm pretty sure that would be a comparable thing. And I, and I guess a question for me is, what are, what are we calling a mass gathering? For example, I know we have, you know, this festival, but also on the same night, we have the daddy-daughter dance. Is that going to be something that's going to be canceled or is that considered a mass event? Or, or where are we going? Because I know we only have one thing on the docket here, but we also have baseball games that have hundreds of people. We have soccer games that have hundreds of people. But this is the only one now, but these are other things that are going on.
I think, I thought I said this. We have an agenda item next Thursday.
Right.
To talk about that, those points that you just raised in a more holistic way and come up with a more broader strategy and approach.
With more input, which would be good from the community.
Yeah, I think, I think the manager should have sent out to you already, if you haven't seen it. What, what we've got scheduled for the remainder of the year. So you can take a look at that and that will give us an idea. And, and these other points, you want to add to that, right?
There's nothing official out there. We did hear a number of gatherings with more than 250 people, which we don't think would affect the father-daughter dance. But that's not, that's just a, that's just a, one of those things that's out there is a suggestion, not.
That was Washington, I think. The governor out there suggested anything.
That's correct.
250.
They made it, I guess they made it a mandate.
Public, yeah, public thing.
I think have adopted that too, but yeah, it's.
I do.
Practices right now.
Thank you, Lou.
As a follow-up to one of the other questions, Lou had sent me an email. He did check with other cities right before the meeting. City of Boca food truck on 313 was, has been canceled. Summer camp expo on the 29th has been canceled and their annual Miami bus trip has been canceled. The Wellington Baptist Health canceled their senior feel-good Friday event tomorrow. Palm Beach Gardens is waiting to see on the art fest. Lake Worth canceled their St. Patrick's Day parade. Revere Beach is, we'll decide at the end of the day. Boynton Beach did cancel their Blarney Bash and Del Ray, the St. Patrick's Day parade. And Lake Worth Shamrock Run, still waiting to hear. So everybody's kind of considering things today and things are changing quickly.
Anything else?
Just, one of my concerns was, you know, you don't want to overreact. I mean, as far as I know, we still don't have a confirmed case here in Palm Beach County, but.
Well, actually, the virus landed in Palm Beach County last night at 8:30 on a jet from New York.
Yeah, thanks, New York. We appreciate it. But I, I mean, I don't know about the spread. But, but the thing is, it seems, you know, that, that was my, my concerns were, number one, that we hadn't had one. If we do have one that's confirmed, you know, that, that's an issue. And we've got a decent amount that are down in Broward. And one of the things I was concerned of is there was, you know, a pretty big festival down there in Coral Springs this weekend that my daughter was supposed to be in. And I just found out like five minutes ago that, now that's postponed as well. And I mean, this is something that's been, it's going on for over four decades down there. So, and then in addition, you know, the village attorney confirmed with me because my son's supposed to march in, well, not only was it the Relay for Life, but in Palm Beach Shore's St. Patrick's Day thing. And he's indicated that's been canceled as well. So I, I mean, it seems that that's the way everything is going and I guess that's just prudent to stay away, I guess.
Abundance of caution. Selena, can she hear us?
Comment? Selena?
Take it off of me. We can't hear you.
Okay.
Okay. Well, let her know that we tried to get her input.
Right. Can I make another comment?
Sure.
I'm here and I'm actually streaming live as well, so it's quite impressive.
How much, there must be a delay factor, no?
Very difficult.
I'll speak slowly. You know, I, I think if somebody has concern about attending an event, they should not attend an event. But those that would like to attend an event should be given the opportunity.
Selena, did you hear the long list of, of other cities and events that have already been canceled and the list is growing? Did you hear that?
I, I did hear and I'm well familiar with many of the events that have been canceled.
Okay.
The Literacy Coalition just held a 600-person luncheon over at the Kravitz Center.
Anything else?
No, those are just my thoughts.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Jeff, you have another comment?
Just one other thing, you know, along the lines of what Richard was saying. You know, we don't want to overreact and we don't want to get caught up in any kind of behavior that might be kind of panic-driven kind of a thing. But at the same time, you know, thinking through some of what seems to have worked and, and of course, I only know what I've heard on, and read in the news media. And, and when you look at Singapore and Hong Kong, they went all in very quickly, shut down a lot of stuff. Now, I know we're not Singapore, I know we're not Hong Kong, but you look at the other countries that didn't do that. And what I've heard was catching this situation and containing it before it gets to like 1% of the population seems to be a very successful approach. On, on the one side, of course, we don't want to overreact. We do, as Selena said, want to provide these choices, allow people to decide for themselves. But then on the other hand, this is a unique situation. It really, really is. And when I look at, well, the one model as I understand it, very limited, that did work, was some very aggressive containment behavior initially. And then hopefully, having contained it, you can get back to normal a little bit quicker. That's my take on it anyway.
When you say containment, but you, I just want to be clear. You, you're recognizing that postponing or not having public gatherings is one of the methodologies to.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's correct.
And then encouraging, a lot of the behavior that we've already heard encouraged, which is if you're sick, stay home, don't go to work, kind of self-quarantine and all of that kind of stuff.
Which is easy to say for a lot of people, but it could be a real challenge for the people who get impacted by that.
That's a, that's a huge issue. It is, absolutely.
I'll put another, I think we've got a good context that we are not out here alone considering this issue. This has been something that has been, as I said, has cascaded across the, the region and really across the coun, the nation. But just to put another context on this, this is unfortunately one of those situations for us where you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. There may be people who might not be happy if it's not, you know, for example, the vendor's not going to be happy if it has to be, if it's postponed. But there would be people who will be happy because now they didn't have family members attend or, you know, it was, it wasn't, the opportunity was taken away for the potential of spreading the virus. So that's where we are. I think our focus should be on taking actions that we believe are in the best interest of our citizens and in the best interest of trying to do what we can. Because we don't have a lot of levers on what we can do here at this, this small little village of Royal Palm Beach. But the things that we do have levers on, I think we should try to exercise them to the extent possible to, you know, provide for the protection and health of our citizens. So that's my thoughts on it.
And just my final thought was, you know, walking in here today in such, such a quick meeting, it seems I probably agreed exactly with what Selena said. You know, hold the event and if people don't want to come, people don't want to come. But the fact is that so many other things, I heard right before here, even the church that we approve special event permits for, for the fish fries. They're apparently not going to be going forward with those. So it's not just government activities and the kid, I guess, I did hear about it, but I wasn't, I didn't know if he was a confirmed person here in Palm Beach County that, that had the virus. So obviously, but then I heard, again, didn't someone over at the convention center attend something there where he shook hands with somebody or he knew, there was a guy there who had it. So we've had at least a couple.
He is infected.
Humans in Palm Beach County that have, that we have confirmed. And I, I guess that's more problematic to me than anything else if we hadn't had any issues. So that's it, thank you.
Just one other thought too, is it's, while people might decide to attend these events because they are willing to accept the risk. We have heard a lot about those folks becoming carriers. They may not even show any, any kind of.
Symptoms.
Symptoms and may not even get sick. And yet they come in contact with grandma and grandpa.
Spread it.
And you wind up spreading it unintentionally on everybody's part, no doubt about it. So that's another thought I had.
Okay. You want anything, Keith?
Just to state what I, what I think is, is obvious, whether it's a cancellation or a postponement, there may be limited exposure in terms of financial implications. I just need to make sure that you're aware of that and so nobody gets surprised in the event that, you know, we're not able to work it out amicably in the event of, however it unfolds, that is a possibility.
Okay. With Lou, you want to add anything, Lou? Or did we cover it all?
No, I think you pretty much covered everything. I've talked to the contractor that runs the, runs the program. Obviously, they want, they want to move forward and they'll do whatever they have to do, but yeah, they're going to take a hit. They're going to take a hit with the vendors and, you know, you know, seafood is not inexpensive. Their vendors are going to, they're going to suffer. As far as rescheduling, I don't see us rescheduling it within the next few months only because now we're getting into the rainy season and it's tough to run any event. So it would have to be in the fall.
And we don't know if it's going to be cleared by then anyway. It could end up being a postponement for, as far as we know.
That's, well, yeah, that's one of the things I also, I think we want to talk about is we need to, and when we talk about this next Thursday, put some kind of time window on, special actions we may take within that window to see how this thing develops. Are they receptive to the rescheduling?
Well, the, the only thing I was, I was going to say, and I suggested to them, is a possibility of running in November, which is the only month we have open.
Okay. Seafood tastes.
Good weather, good weather month.
It is a good weather month.
Might even turn out to be better.
All right, anything else? Lou, that's it. Ray, anything else?
No, Mayor.
Selena, anything else? Hello, Selena?
No, I, I appreciate the opportunity and everyone's perspective. No, I, I appreciate the opportunity and everyone's perspective. Hello?
Yeah, we hear you, we can hear you.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that...
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you, yes. All right, so there's no further discussion. I'll look for a motion, a motion to postpone the seafood festival for this weekend.
I'll make a motion to postpone the Royal Palm Beach Seafood Festival from the current weekend to a date to be determined.
If I, if I can restate the motion slightly, just to, so the, since the previous council action was to approve the special event permit to allow the seafood festival to occur on this date, it needs to, I guess, modify the approval of the special event permit to not allow the event to take place on the stated dates, but to work with the vendor to reschedule it at a undetermined or to be determined future date.
Can you do that?
So moved? So, yeah, I'll take the easy way and just say, so moved.
I just wanted to make sure we cover the action in the special event permit. Typically, you know, since it was a unanimous vote, everybody was on the prevailing side, so to speak, in terms of reconsidering. So I think that that will cover it procedurally.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Selena, did you hear that?
Pardon me?
Is it seven seconds delay?
Three to seven. If she's watching it.
I did hear it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We got to wait.
Aye.
Okay, we have one opposed. All right, so Diane, please let the record show that the motion was approved by a vote of four to one. I thank you all once again for interrupting your, your day on a very short notice. And as I said, be prepared, we will go into great detail and hopefully come up with a more broader, longer-term strategy about all of these events at all different levels that their village is, is involved with. And we'll go forward from here. Thanks again. If there are no further questions, we're adjourned. Thank you all.